Morning everyone, the one hundred twenty F regular session of Guniyang Bayan of Ipeel is now about to commence. I am, I am uh inviting everyone to please rise as we welcome the entrance of the official mace of this Angunyang Bayan of Ipeel together with our acting presiding officer, Honorable Glenn Ayans Abihoon and together with our Sanggunyang secretary, Madam Estelita Iggya.
Hello, hello. Uh we are now about to start. The chair would like um to call order our one hundred nineteenth regular session, one hundred twenty regular sessions. For the opening prayer, I would like to request Honorable Ramos and to be followed by the national anthem.
Sir Chair, uh this is the first uh Wednesday of the month and in unison, we will all recite the counselor script. Do you have a copy with you? The counselor script. I am a Philippine counselor mandated by law and up pressures and ordinances that were down to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness is prosperity. I believe in public service about self as the guiding principles of my official acts and as I had the pathways of local legislation. May the almighty guide my mind and heart and shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people. Okay, uh madam secretary, please call the room. Okay, good morning, tuition everyone. Welcome to the hundred twentieth regular session. Present for today's regular, regular session, Mr. Chair, the Halloween. Honorable Glenn Ayans Abihoon, Honorable Elias Dampalan, Honorable Catherine Turalba, Honorable Serapin Ramos, we have Honorable Juan Pablo Nueva, Honorable Roy Andio Licario, and we have Honorable Lapid Muhammad. On record, there are seven sir, we are in four.
Assuming majority of this body is present, uh the chair would like to declare uh person for uh for the approval of uh for the adoption of Robal, Mr. Chair.
Sir Chair, at this juncture, may I move for the adoption of the order of business for today's regular session?
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second, seconded by Honorable Lapid. Any discussion, amendments, objection, tribunan, motion approved?
Mr. Chair, we are now on the visitor's hour. We have drop all of visitors. Mr. Chair, may I move for the suspension of the rules?
To suspend the
Uh Mr. Chair, we have here uh three, three visitors, uh Mr. Chair, all of them is seeking for financial assistance and we just let our staff to uh to approach our uh members of the honorable chamber for uh the, the said uh solicitation, Mr. Chair.
There's no visitor, Mr. Chair.
There are no more visitors, Mr. Chair.
Uh so, Mr. Chair, uh the chair would like to know, would like to avail up to each other?
The chair would like to know uh among these uh members of this honorable chamber who want to avail the privilege our you may do so by raising your hand so that you will be recognized by our presiding officer. Be it personal or collective matter. Mr. Chair, no one raised their hands, Mr. Chair, and moving on, Mr. Chair, for the approval of the minutes.
Sir, for leaving approval of minutes, we should pre- um, well, in the previous session, session.
Mr. Chair, may I move for the approval of the minutes of the previous session and moving for the approva- uh dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous uh session, Mr. Chair, and moving for the approval of the same.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second? Seconded by Honorable Lapid. Any discussion, amendments, objection, tribunan, motion approved? Uh for the first order of, uh of order pieces for today, madam secretary, please.
Okay, for the reference of business under proposed ordinance eight dash one, we have here draft ordinance number one four five sponsored by Honorable Serapin Ramos and ordinance setting guidelines under retirement of the Barangay Agri-Fishery Program Ordinances of Purpose and Providing Finance. Mr. Chair, I move that this uh matter be referred to the committee on rules, ordinances, and resolutions.
This matter will be referred in rules and ordinances.
Item B, we have here draft ordinance number one four six sponsored by Honorable Catherine Turalba an ordinance implementing and enforcing the provisions of Republic Act nine two zero eight otherwise known as the Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of two thousand three as amended by R A ten three six four or the expanded Anti-Trafficking in Person Act of twenty twenty three and further amended by R A eleven eight six two or the expanded Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of twenty twenty two.
So what's the pleasure, somebody?
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
We have the, the floor.
Yes, may I have the floor?
Mr. Chair, I move for this proposed municipal, municipal ordinance, an ordinance implementing and enforcing the provisions of Republic Act number nine two zero eight otherwise known as the Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of two thousand and three as amended by Republic Act number ten three six four or the expanded Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of two twenty twenty three and further amended by Republic Act number one one eight six two or the expanded Anti-Trafficking in Persons Act of twenty twenty two. Mr. Chair, I submit and so move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second? Seconded by Honorable Nega. Any discussion, amendments, objection, tribunan, motion approved?
Mr. Chair, I move that this proposed municipal ordinance be calendared for second reading on the next regular session.
This ordinance will be calendared in the next regular, regular session.
Under other communications, we have here the annual budget for C Y twenty twenty five of Barangay Buluan.
What's the pleasure, somebody?
Mr. Chair, I move that this matter be referred to the committee on appropriations and finance.
This matter will be referred in committee on appropriation and finance.
Under item B, a copy of the agreement between Barangay Publacion headed by Honorable Roy Andio Licario, Punong Barangay and Mister Paulo Shook, owner of junk bar located at Barangay Publacion.
So what's the pleasure, somebody?
Uh, Mr. Chair, this has been the, uh the agony of the residents of that uh area and uh fortunate enough that they have already come up with an, with an agreement although it will just be an information for this August body but may we know from our secretary uh what are the agreements?
Madam secretary, please.
I move, Mr. Chair, for the suspension of the rules.
Suspend it.
Okay, the copy of the agreement is in your computers. Uh this was okay, so this is the content of the agreement that the barangay publacion will issue a barangay business clearance as long as Mister Paulo Shook will follow the municipal ordinance number zero seven two six five dash two thousand nine an ordinance circulating noise in the operation of entertainment establishment and other similar related activities and providing penalties for violation thereof. Number two, that Mister Paulo Shook will minimize the sound or noise of his establishment at eleven o'clock in the evening onwards. Three, if Mister Paulo Shook failed to comply the said agreement particularly the municipal ordinance number zero seven two six five, the barangay council through the punong barangay will act on the said violation and he affix their signature voluntarily with the honorable Punong barangay, Mister Shook, and witnessed by Honorable Michael Largo and Aspera.
Okay. Um before that, I would like to acknowledge the presence of uh Honorable.
We will just uh, we, we will um back to order, Mr. Chair, before we will acknowledge.
Back order. Before that, I would like to acknowledge the presence of Honorable Chong.
Mr. Chair, thank you to our Sanggunan as secretary for heading that uh agreement although we know the content of the, of the agreement but uh because we are streaming live, we will uh also let the
Uh be, uh let and, and let that copy of that agreement be furnished also to Mrs. Aspera uh as the uh main complainant of that particular concern and for information of this August body, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Please take that, madam secretary. Before that, can I ask the um Honorable Roy about it? Oh, later, later, later in other matters, sir. Okay, next, madam secretary.
Okay, so item C, duly endorsed from the office of the mayor is a copy of the date of use of frac for the use of real property, real estate property between L G E P L and V C S O for the use of the old municipal cooperative building located at barangay publacion. Mr. Chair, I move that matter be referred to the committee on rules.
This matter will be referred in committee rules.
Item D, duly endorsed from the office of the, of the mayor is the request of Miss Indy Rojo for the amendment of resolution to change the amount from twenty three thousand seven hundred forty point twenty one to seventy four thousand zero zero eight point sixty nine.
So what's the pleasure, somebody?
Ms- uh Mr. Chair, uh before this humble representation, we present an amendment for that particular particular matter, privileged motion, Mr. Chair, I move that this chair be relinquished to the honorable Winifredo Chong, he's already around. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Chong, you may have the seat. Thank you, Honorable Turalba. So what's the pleasure, somebody, of this um duly endorsed by the municipal mayor, the request of Miss Indy?
Sir Chair, may I have the floor? Uh There, there was a clerical error on the uh submission before of Miss Cindy Rojo on her request to incorporate the uh her six months salaries in the uh supplemental budget for this year. So, Mr. Chair, I move for an amendment uh of resolution number nine six one eight dash twenty twenty four uh to change the amount from twenty three thousand seven hundred forty pesos and twenty one centavos to seventy four thousand zero zero eight and sixty nine centavos. I submit and so move, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there's a, um, there's a motion passed by Honorable Turalba. Any second? Seconded by Honorable Nega. Any discussion? Amendments? Yes, Honorable Ramos?
Can we request, Mr. Chair, to, Honorable Ramos, to
L G E P L?
Yes, mayor's office.
Na, na ano manasip ya, manap?
Uh, may, may I have the floor, Mr. Chair?
Honorable, you may have the floor now.
Uh the, the document that was submitted in the, in the office of the municipal mayor was the uh the net, no? But we have to, but we have to approve the gross. The gross. The gross. Kay, dito man kuwan to mga G S I S pa niya, so wala to makuhan. So that's why uh we, we present this resolution of amendment, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Honorable Ramos?
See, the figure reflected here, seventy four thousand eight point sixty nine is gross.
Gross.
Gross, yeah. Whereas, katung previous is twenty three thousand seven forty, so this is the net, net.
Thank you. Please us for two minutes. So what's the pleasure, somebody?
Honorable Chair, I move that this matter be referred to committee on rules.
This matter be referred in committee on rules.
We honor the committee reports, sir.
Mr. Chair, for the respective committee reports, please.
We are now on committee report. Is, is there any member of this honorable chamber who wishes to ob- who has committee report? Please raise your hand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Honorable Turalba, you are not recognized.
I have a committee report, Mr. Chair, on the committee on rules. Rule, sir, Mr. Chair, for, for a minute.
Please us for one minute.
The subject is supplemental budget number zero one, calendar year twenty twenty four of barangay Lower Tawai amounting to hundred thirty nine thousand five hundred pesos. The sup- uh The sup, uh, committee report number four seven zero. The subject is the supplemental budget number zero two, CY twenty twenty-four of barangay Tenan, amounting to hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred seven and ninety-one centavos. Uh, the, uh, committee report number four seven one. The subject is the supplemental budget number zero one, calendar year twenty twenty-four of barangay Lower Ipil Heights, amounting to eighty-five thousand four hundred fifty-six pesos and fourteen centavos. The remarks and recommendations, the committee appropriations to which was referred this, the, uh, supplemental budget number one, calendar year twenty twenty-four of barangay Lower Tawai. Yeah, the, uh, supplemental budget number two of barangay Tenan and the supplemental budget number one, CY twenty twenty-four of barangay Lower Ipil Heights, uh, this municipality for review, evaluation and approval. The said supplemental budget has been referred to the local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is hereby declared operative in its entirety, effective upon its approval, subject to the posting requirements under section fifty-nine of RA seventy-one sixty and further, subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the LGU must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section three oh five of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited by or inconsistent with provisions of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval, provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines and procedures in the budget execution phase prescribed under the Budget Civil Service Laws, Budgeting, Accounting and Auditing Rules and Regulations. Mister Chair, I move for the adoption of this committee report number four six nine four seven zero and four seven one of the Committee on Appropriations.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Mister Chair? I move for a resolution declaring operative in its entirety the supplemental budget number one, CY twenty twenty-four of barangay Lower Tawai, amounting to hundred thirty-nine pesos and five hun- one hundred thirty-nine thousand and five hundred pesos. I submit, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Another resolution, Mister Chair, declaring operative in its entirety the supplemental budget number zero two, CY twenty twenty-four of barangay Tenan, amounting to hundred forty-eight thousand two hundred seven and ninety-one centavos. I submit, Mister Chair.
So there's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Nega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Another resolution, Mister Chair, declaring operative in its entirety the supplemental budget number one, CY twenty twenty-four of barangay Lower Ipil Heights, amounting to eighty-five thousand four hundred fifty-six pesos and fourteen centavos. I submit and subdue, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second?
Second.
Seconded by the Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Thank you, Mister Chair, that's for the Committee on Appropriation. And I have a committee reports on the Committee on Rules. Uh, committee report number four seven two. The subject is the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the local government unit of Ipil and the twenty-eight barangays of this municipality for the implementation of barangay impact project twenty twenty-four, phase three, in compliance with the audit, observation and recommendation from the Commission on Audit uh, for, uh, for this Sanggunyang Bayan for the, uh, appropriate review. The remarks and recommendations of the Committee on Rules, ordinances and resolutions to which was referred the subject matter for review. Uh, the, upon, uh, upon review, the committee find it appropriate, consistent to its form and substance, the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the local government unit of Ipil and the twenty-eight barangays of this municipality. The committee therefore is recommending for the approval of the said memorandum of agreement. I move for the adoption of the committee report number four seven two, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second?
Second.
Seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Mister Chair, I move, uh, for a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, the Honorable Anna Melce Olegario, to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the twenty-eight barangays of this municipality for the barangay impact project twenty twenty-four, phase three, in compliance to the audit, observation and, and recommendation from the Comi- Commission on Audit. And moving the same to authorize the local chief executive to sign for and in behalf of the local government unit of Ipil, I submit and subdue, Mister Chair.
Second, um, there's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Another, uh, committee report, Mister Chair, committee report number four, uh, seven three. An endorsed, uh, letter from the office of the municipal mayor for a memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the Ateneo de Zambuanga University students for their community training of, uh, medical students in the municipality of Ipil. The remarks and recommendations of the Committee on Rules, ordinances and resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred for review. After review, the, the, the committee find it appropriate, consistent to its form and substance and thus recommending the approval of the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the Ateneo de Zambuanga University School of Medicine with the local government unit of Ipil for the community training of medical students in the municipality. I move for the adoption of the committee report number four seven three, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Mister Chair, I move for a resolution approving the content of the MOWA to be entered into by the local government unit of Ipil with the, uh, Ateneo de Zambuanga University School of Medicine for the commu- community training of medical students in the municipality of Ipil, represented by its, uh, community operations coordinator, uh, Doctor Shino Reno de Soto and the, with the local government unit of Ipil, represented by the Honorable Anna Melce Olegario. Mister Chair, I subdue and submit.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second?
Second.
Seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Another resolution, Mister Chair, authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Ateneo de Zambuanga University School of Medicine and to sign for in behalf of the local government unit of Ipil, I submit, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second?
Second.
Seconded, Honorable Lapid, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Committee report number four seven four, still on the Committee on Rules, Orders and Resolutions. Uh, the subject, Mister Chair, is the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the, uh, Mindanao State University Buog Campus College of Arts and Sciences with the local government unit of Ipil for the proposed affiliation agreement with Ipil Rural Health Unit for the training of student, students in health profession education. Mister Chair, the remarks and recommendations, the Committee on Rules, ordinances and resolutions to which the above subject matter was referred for review. After review, the committee find it appropriate, uh, uh, to allow the memorandum of agreement to be entered into by the MSU Buog Campus College of Arts and the Sciences and the local government unit of Ipil for the proposed affiliation agreement with Ipil Rural Health Unit for the training of students in health profession education. Mister Chair, I move for adoption of the committee report number four seven four.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Nega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Mister Chair, I move of, for the approval of the content of the MOWA to be entered into by the Mindanao State University Buog Campus College of Arts and Sciences, represented by its program coordinator nursing department, Tasmira de Laranho, RN MAN, with the local government unit of Ipil, represented, uh, represented by the Honorable Anna Melce Olegario, the municipal mayor. I submit and subdue, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Nega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Committee report number, uh, no, uh, another resolution, Mister Chair. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Mindanao State University Buog Campus College of Arts and Sciences with the local government unit of Ipil and authorizing the same to sign for and in behalf of the local government unit of Ipil.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second? Seconded, Honorable Nega, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved? Okay, before we proceed, I would like to acknowledge, um, Honorable Palalo. Good morning.
That will be all, Mister Chair, for the two committees. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Sir Flor?
Is there any other committee report?
Mm-mm.
Those are committee report, please raise your hand. If none, then we're, we are through with the committee report, Honorable Chair.
For business for today's, for second reading, Madam Sekatara?
For second reading, we have three. The first is still laid on the table, the ordinance declaring Bayan Kumpinagmulan as official hymn of the municipality. This is sponsored by Honorable Sheriff Mazin Hasim. Number two, we have the ordinance adapting, uh, for the adoption of Palinki QR Code program to be implemented in this municipality.
Mister Chair?
So what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Chair, I still move that for, uh, second reading on the next regular session, Mister Chair.
This matter be calendered, um, for second reading for the next, next regular session.
Item D, we have the ordinance reclassifying ten thousand square meters portion of parcel of lot number twelve four four dash B, PSD zero nine dash zero five one zero four one, TCT number E dash thirty-five, what, thirty-five thousand one hundred thirty-eight containing an area of thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-six square meters situated at Veterans Village, from agricultural to commercial land.
So what's the pleasure of the proponent?
Mister Chair, I move for the approval for second reading of this ordinance reclassifying ten thousand square meters portion of parcel of lot number twelve forty-four dash B, PSD zero nine zero five one zero four one, TCT number E dash thirty-five thousand one thirty-eight containing an area of thirty thousand nine hundred eighty-six square meters situated at Veterans Village, this municipality from agricultural to commercial, Mister Chair. I subdue, Mister Chair.
There's a motion passed by Honorable Talaba, any second?
I second, Mister Chair.
Um, the, um, seconded by Honorable Palalo, any discussion? Amendments? Objection? There being none, motion approved?
Mister Chair, I move that this matter be calendered on the next regular session for the third and final reading.
This matter, um, this ordinance will be calendered for second, um, for second reading for the next regular session. Um, business for the third and final reading, Madam Sekatara?
We have one, the ordinance institutionalizing the key assistance for developing alo- adolescence or kada in the municipality of Ipil.
Okay, so those in favor of this ordinance, um, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye. Honorable, okay. I think, um, all of us are in favor of this ordinance. Um, um, ordinance institutionalizing the key assistance for developing adolescents in this municipality of Ipil is been approved.
Or no other matters, sir?
Can anyone suspend the rules for accommodate other matters, please?
Honorable Chair?
Yes, Mister Flor?
I think we have late visitor.
Okay, can anyone suspend the rules before?
I move for suspension, Mister Chair.
Okay, no suspended. Mister Flor?
Honorable Chair, I move that visitor, Yonella, Honorable Yonella B. A. Vernos of barangay Buluan be recognized.
Sir, um, you may have the floor now. Ma, you may have the floor, good morning.
Hello, okay. Ah, salamat sa ginono, sa kamuntagon. Ah, ang salamat po sa kaigayon ngayong gihatag namo. Una sa tanan, nagigud rin itambong alang sa osaka, ah, hangyo sa osaka bata nga ilo. Wala na siya ginikanan, kunli ang gapaiskwila yang ayaan, na mangisda lang po. Magraduate siya o ecosystem engineering man siguro ni, yang course ako sang basahon. A Bachelor of Science in Agricultural and Biosystem Engineering di ay. Then ang iyang problema is dasile konvension dito sa Jinsan. Ang gikinhangla niya is eleven thousand, six five ang registration, three thousand ang accommodation, two five ang transportation, man ang eleven thousand. So ni agi ko ganina sa barangay, kay dito minagsisyo na ka, likom siya dito o three thousand. Dayon, nga hangyo pagmisa niyong malumu, nga kasingkasing, og pipila lang po ng inyong mahatag. Na aron lang po nga, makalakaw git siya, kay pit sa kinsima ng iyang lakaw sa Jinsan. Aron lang git na makuhan niyan in konvensionan niya nga. Gerecord po, aron maka graduate siya karong March. Una nga, naako, naako diri, osagyo ko nga na tabang sa bata, kay maluoy po, osa siya ka, subanin. Naasi, Jan Robert Pakunla, una siya. Motto siya, Mister Chair, ang problema namo.
So, from the staff, please? Um, so what's the pleasure of the body? That, okay, ma, thank you. Um, may, uh, mga assistance, yata ngalang ang mukarona, pagkuan.
Sige, thank you, sir, mula.
Thank you. Any more other matters? Please us for two minutes.
Salud na, sana.
Um... Yes, Honorable Talba?
Mr. Chair, our Municipal Budget Officer is already around.
Okay. Ma'am, you may have the floor now. Nalamig aming query? Um, nalamig aming query ma'am about sa load allowance na mo sa kuad. Sa... kasi ang other na municipalities morag same lang yapon ng kuad, so nag-ask ng may if, um, say update din nganong kuad.
Okay. Ah, on the grant... On the grant of communication expenses of certain government personnel, we followed the latest, ah, Budget Circular number 2024 thus two, dated August 2, 2024. And effectivity of this is effective August 2024. But in our case, since negawa siya morag in the middle na of August, we effect this, ah, effective September 2024. And the guideline says nadari even the rate. The rate of department head, vice mayor, mayor, and Sangguni Ambayan members is equivalent to department head salary grade 24, like RATA. Actually, the requirements is like RATA. In the case of Sangguni Ambayan, for the proof of attendance, we have the certification from the SB secretary on the number of sessions being attended. On the certification that the load allowance was used in the performance of our duty, same with the certification of RATA. Attached in the circular is the sample certification. This is to certify that communication expenses incurred in the total amount of sa department head is 2,000 per month man for the period covering September 2024. Were all official in nature and necessary to the performance of official function. This certification is issued to support the reimbursement of said expenses. So we have a ceiling of 2,000, but it doesn't mean nga 2,000 juds siya. If you cannot support in the reimbursement receipt amounting to 2,000, so delete na'to pwedeng makclaim ang 2,000. Depende sa pila ang gamit. So depende sa unsa support ato ang ma-provide. Now, in the support, it should be nga ang number sa certain personnel or official should be registered that that number is for official use only. Let's say 0947 and 901072, the number of Concejal Toralba. It should be registered that that number is official number used in the performance of his or her duty as Sangguni Ambayan member. So pa'unsan na'to maprooob nga ang gilodan is kana nga number, diba? Kaya pwede man ta magload using the 2,000 to different numbers. Diba?
Ah, yang interpretasyon.
So ang katung girегистer nga number nga gamitun as official number in the performance of duties, mato siya i-register. So ang proof ato, gilodan na'to siyang a number. So pa'as... asa bataga e-load. Kung e-load, if ang pla... if plan siya is the billing, kaya kung plan naman ang name, naa ang number. Pero kung e-load, pa'unsan ta mag e-load. Diba? We can e-load through Gcash. So sa Gcash, diba mo transfer matag certain amount to load, diba na'y number, mo notify si Gcash na has been loaded sa aning a number screenshot. Kung ang inyong Gcash, usually naman naattach ang email. Mo email sa na si Gcash. Ang Gcash naman na inyong number, man na... no, ang Gcash number, mo message man na si Gcash sa ato ang number. So katulay i-screenshot then print. Then mo lang to siya ang i-attach. If e-load, delete plan. Pero kung plan, ang iattach katung billing. If in case ang inyong plan more than 2,000, so personal na'to bayaran ang excess, ceiling taog 2,000. Sakay sa derisa guidelines, ang department head salary grade 24 is 2,000, salary grade 25 og 24 is 2,000, salary grade 26 and 27 is 2,005, salary grade 28 is 3,000, 29 and 35,000, 31 is 8,000. And same sa RATA, na siya girequire nga number of days. Ngat least 17 working days ang na-perform 100%. Versa Sangguni Ambayan, ang ato ang supportan na katung session man nga upat. So naman to equivalent, no, same sa RATA. Sa amo ah, sa department head, number of days among ginasupport is DTR. Ngadapat 17 days above. Kung less than 17 days, mo naputu frated na ay 75%, 65%, depende sa number of days. 17 and more, 100%. 12 to 16 days, 75%. 6 to 11 days, 50%. And 1 to 5 days is 25% of the 2,000.
Nakoy inquiry ma'am. Sa pag... sa pagawasan na ang memo, ang Sangguni Ambayan lang ba karoon as of September, wala nakaclaim o, ah, load?
Naapay... naapay na ay nakaclaim, napapoy wala nakaclaim. Kaya usually ang uban magclaim, kaya gamayan na sila sa 2,000 gina...
Lamsam.
Lamsam for, ah, every quarter.
Okay.
Usually January to March, April to June, then July to September, then October to December.
Example ko na'my ma'am, sa imuhang apart, pa'unsan na mo naclaim ang imong load?
Ako load?
Oo, yes.
Plan man ko.
Ah, plan ka.
Plan ko, so dalira.
Dalira dyan.
Dalira. Na ay nakaclaim si ma'am Sani, HR. Ang iyang iattach is ang iyahang Gcash nga e-load. So na ay nagclaim pod nga ang 2,000 ang gidirectyon niya load. Ang uban, kalang tigi-tigi, 5,000. Oh, 500, another 500, another 500, ano.
Panalang ko 'yan, after election na lang ta magclaim mo ng...
Dami mo'y staff.
So ang mga mo ang last 2 months na wala namo naclaim ma'am pwidi pa namutukan?
Oh, more.
Kesa kuad lang sa moa, sa communication. Wala po'y... wala po'y communication letter gigan sa inyong ha pod sa moa na nabot good pod sa about sa nagbaguhan guidelines?
Ah, usually pa guidelines, wala dudmiga... Ga... sanag? Ah, disseminate morag. Pero kani siya sa department head, ah, sorry, kawal... Sorry, di ay no, kawala man appeal ang SB sa department head. Sa mga department head nga GC, every update, giga-update means sa GC kung unsay mga, mga kabaguhan. So, ah, my apology, next time kung na ay mga baguha mga guidelines, ah, mo furnish na lang may copy sa inyo kung kuad. Pero kani siya, gipa-disseminate man ako ni all offices, gipa-hibalu daan. Ngaiinun ana ang effect, supposed to be August, wala namo gi-effect og August, September na.
Ma'am, mga department head?
Yes, cons, naa.
Di, ayamay mapili 'yan, daghan na kami ga-billing.
Okay.
Maghatag nalampud kuad niya.
Any more query?
Galibog, galibog ni amo mga staff, basa magfollow-up, kasi sila kaya ko tawag. Go na'to atong budget officer, kay ato sa... pa-explain sumakay.
Oo, pangayo lang pod mo og assistance sa moa pa'unsan siya i-plaster. Nagha-actually, naghatag me og ka na morag template bitaw sa mag-mangutahan na dito. Template na yun, himuan na lang ako draft para iencode na lang, para delete na maglisod pa'unsan.
Ma'ri ani, kani delete man plan na'to ah.
Kung e-load, morag ang na-change lang, kay sa una, mo kuha ramantag receipt, no, any, any receipt. So na-change lang, kay kinhahanglan mo appear ang number. Pa'unsan ba, ang uban sa palawan mano, ang uban? Oh, kios, oo. Basta na alay proof, i-picturan or screenshot, wala man nag-streak nga, dapat original dyan, wala. Basta na alam tayong mapakita nga ang gilodan, katung number, same number. Delete na'to pwede e-load sa tong asawa, or sa tong bana, or sa tong anak, or sa tong igagaw, sa tuad jung number.
Correct mo, correct.
Morag ana ba, official man siya.
Before, before na'to, ah, i-dismiss si, ah, budget, resesa kay ato sa kuad.
Okay, please ask for 2 minutes.